It takes a lot of time to get that approved and through the, through the commission. We also like to strategically pick when we go back to the, to the W F R C to request those additional funds. Um, with this one, with their already being funds and the, the large contribution from the county. Um, we, we felt it would be best on this one for the city to, to come up with a way to show, to fund the shortfall.
Okay, because um, our last W F R C meeting, almost every project was two million plus below the, what it was really going to cost. So we increased all of them, two million and more. So they've got the funds. So have you checked with them to see if you can get it through fast?
Dan's raising his hand. I think he'd like to chime in.
This is a transportation alternative program, which generally is relatively low funded.
Okay.
So that like this surface transportation program has a lot more money because those generally are higher dollar programs. This is actually a lot of money that's actually, that's been given through the transportation program and I wouldn't, I'd be surprised if they had.
They would move it up?
Hmm. Okay. Had enough money to help us with this short.
No, that's a good clarification. The S C P program you're usually dealing in the twenty to thirty million dollar range that they have available. A TAP program you're used in the one to two million dollars that they have available to, for all of the projects. So it is a little bit more challenging with this funding source.
Okay. So we're asking for the city to pitch in seven hundred thousand?
Correct.
Fifty-one, fifty-five.
Uh, increase the amount um, that we previously executed with federal aid agreement uh, by seven hundred thousand dollars. It brings our, the city's total contribution to one point three million dollars for this project.
Okay. Was the original matching funds that we needed to put in?
So we were, we were doing matching funds plus contributing some to the project already. So now we're contributing extra.
Okay.
Yeah. So the overall funding source now you have about eight hundred thousand of federal money, one point three five million of county transportation funds, and then one point three million of local transportation funds, city funds.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, no, maybe there is a question.
On the overlay question, on the overlay project, yeah. Will that interfere with tracks? Will they continue to be operate, at least on twenty-seven hundred west?
Yeah, tracks will continue to operate. When we get to the intersections, there's some complications there. You have to have certified flaggers and potential nighttime work when we're by the intersections. But tracks will be able to operate well.
Thanks.
Hey, thank you.
All right, our consent agenda. Did anybody have any questions? That Mr. Flores or Dan can answer on that one? The bios on the two people being reappointed were very helpful. Mr. Harmon.
Sorry, um, can we get uh, the crosstown trail plans? Just kind of see where that. If you can just send that to us, that'd be fine. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Okay, so the consent agenda, I'm not seeing any questions on. So we'll go to our communications and we'll start with the um, Rocky Mountain Power High Voltage Transmission Line update from Mr. Knowles.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Appreciate this opportunity to visit with you this afternoon. Presentation, I guess, is uh, forthcoming. We are here today. My name's Brad Knowles with Rocky Mountain Power. Uh, and I've invited Spence Fowler to join me as well to help with any technical questions should they arise. We wanted to provide an update on our Oker to terminals, three hundred and forty-five kilovolt transmission line. Uh, introduce the project if you're not familiar with it already, and then discuss a little bit about the, the purpose. Um, I guess I just hit the enter button here to advance. There we go. So, quick agenda, uh, uh, provide a overview of the gateway program. Uh, then provide a little project background. Discuss the purpose and need for the project and then kind of show some examples of tower and pole models that we intend to install. And then follow up with the project description and map. And then do some questions. I'm not sure what the etiquette is, uh, the common etiquette. You're welcome to ask questions as I proceed. And then there, of course, there'll be a final opportunity to address any questions or add any clarity. Pacific Corp has a, a gateway transmission program that's been uh, more than a decade in the making. Perhaps around two decades in the making. And to provide an overview, you can see a map of our service territory there. And we have several large segments that this makes a part of. This is a very small segment here in our highly populated area, but we have a project called Gateway West that goes in from eastern, central eastern Wyoming across west into Idaho and Oregon. Um, kind of a uh, a hotspot for renewable generation at the endpoint of that line. And then we've got a more recent project called Gateway South going into, to Mona in central Utah. Uh, and then there, those are the kind of the, the main elements of the project. And then uh, this segment here in the valley from our Oker Substation, which is uh, north and west Jordan to the terminal substation near the airport, just south of the airport. So the purpose here is to strengthen uh, the reliability of Pacific Corp's transmission system and provide voltage support to the transmission network. Uh, and then mitigate the impact of outages on the existing system and enhance our ability to provide reliable surface at a reason, service at a reasonable cost for customers uh, today and into the future. So this project will also, at a kind of a county or a local Wasatch front level, increase our ability to transfer capacity around the Wasatch front and our growing population centers. Also improves the transmission of bulk power between central and northern Utah. And then supports our load serving capabilities as well as the projected growth in the area. Uh, while facilitating connection of additional renewable energy capacity in the region. Solar and wind in other parts of the state and in our surrounding states. So a little background, this project has been quite a while uh, in the works. Uh, was technically started in two thousand nine when we began to acquire uh, the proper land rights to uh, construct this uh, segment adjacent to others that are existing. Uh, you may be familiar with the Mountain View Corridor project uh, that was utilized with the Rocky Mountain Power Corridor. There was a lot of land swapping that took place uh, about ten years ago, ten to uh, to eight years ago uh, to account for this new segment. So those, we use the term easements, but most of this property is owned in fee simple by uh, Rocky Mountain Power. Uh, and that was all handled again between about two thousand nine and two thousand fifteen. The project is fourteen miles long. The jurisdictions in the project area include Salt Lake City and then heading southwest Valley City, West Jordan, and then Kearns uh, managed by the Greater Salt Lake Municipal Services District. Again, purpose and need covered some of this already, but the, the key elements here are access to energy resources. This helps us integrate more renewable energy into the grid and deliver electricity generated from plant facilities in Wyoming, including renewable and thermal sources. And then reliability, this will enhance uh, reliability and resilience of the existing power supply in the area. Helping us avoid blackouts, brownouts and other service disruptions with significant economic and personal costs that can come with those. And then local load. I don't have to tell you about the industrial development and other requirements in your own community here. Uh, the purpose is to support future growth of electrical load in the service region. And want to emphasize that it's not just a matter of choice here, but it's uh, a, a matter of meeting the needs of our customers. Um, we need this capacity to serve the requests and the growth that is occurring.
Do I have a question?
Yeah.
So um, twenty years ago or so, you built the power station out by Frito Lay for extra load for this area, but then it was sold to Umpa. So will this be bringing power from other sources instead of being able to use that power? In our city?
Yes, essentially there, there's, this collects the power at the substations, uh, terminal near the airport in Oker and West Jordan. They're also fed through a similar network, three hundred and forty-five kilovolt or five hundred uh, from Wyoming. And then
Okay.
Essentially, yeah. So transmission capacity also, uh, our transmission network is used by uh, other parties, municipalities and rural electric utilities. And this will accommodate growing trends, much like the U M P A uh, uses our transmission network to serve those member communities. A few technical aspects of the project, um, again located in Salt Lake City, West Valley, Kearns and West Jordan. Uh, we're looking at approximately one hundred new structures. Approximately fourteen miles of new transmission line, uh, over thirteen miles of this on private land, which we uh, Pacific Corp owns. And then approximately one mile or less than a mile on uh, private land. And so the span between the structures ranges from eighteen hundred to thirteen hundred feet. And the average tower height ranges from a hundred and forty-five to one hundred and eighty-five feet. And then access to the structures will require uh, use of existing runway, as I mentioned. And then we will utilize existing pathways into the new corridor um, to construct and maintain the, the, the project, the, the, the facilities. Right away width is a hundred and fifty feet uh, on either side of the center line, uh, sorry, total uh, for e- each structure. Route map, this is showing, uh, I have two slides here showing just the West Valley jurisdictional. So you can see it about twenty, uh, twenty-one hundred south, heading uh, south. There, it's probably hard to get eyes on all the detail there, but and then the second segment there. Getting at the Kearns limit, right? Not where we're not West Jordan yet. And that's essentially the numbers there indicate structure locations. That is our project, um, essentially. Happy to address any questions or add any clarity if I could.
Hey, any questions from the council?
You had a slide that had different towers. Can you just briefly discuss the differences?
Sure.
Spars.
Thank you to whoever's uh, helping me there. Act, one more, I think. Yep, there we go. So I think we've got, and Spence may be able to help me out. I think we've got a variety of structures planned, or are, or each, each three of those are examples of
Yeah, that's everything that's kind of currently out there. The ones working in the two, the ones in the center.
The center, and they'll be
The middle structure.
They'll be uniform to the new project. Those, those center structures.
And they all just go west of the Mountain View?
Or in the existing corridor there.
That was good planning, by the way. Thank you.
And I, let me add that we appreciate uh, that this corridor is in West Valley, perhaps more so than the city does. Um, we acknowledge uh, we acknowledge it. We're, we're appreciative of the city's accommodation here and it's a very important uh, asset to us, of course, and uh, important to, to serve the economic needs of the city. So appreciate this opportunity and you can find us there. Our contact information's on that last slide and staff knows how to locate us as well. So and counsel, please feel free to reach out if we can be of assistance at any time during the project.
And when do you expect you're going to start construction?
Uh, Spence, you want to, April coming up pretty quickly here.
Oh, nice.
So.
So are you going to do any public outreach to let the residents that are right up against a residential? That, with this is going on, or do we need to help with that?
We don't have plans to do any public outreach uh, for the project. We can certainly discuss that.
Because there is a lot, is there a lot of disruption to the residents around there? Are they even going to notice you're doing the construction?
I, I mean, it's, it's a fairly large construction project, so there, we won't be able to do it, uh, you know, uh, quietly. I mean, I should say relatively, there'd be some, but we, I think our belief is that most of the residents, I mean, many of them, we negotiated with years ago uh, in that area. The corridor is very visible. Um, so we would hope that nobody is, is too surprised uh, with, with the project.
Well, thank you so much for letting us know what's going on.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate your time this afternoon.
Thank you. All right, we'll now go to our legislative update and we'll turn the time over to Mr. Hill.
All right, Brandon Hill at the Legal Department, and thank you for uh, paying attention to me one more time uh, for the legislative update. So um, best thing about the legislature, of course, is that it is over. Um, and uh, may the constitution never change and may forty-five days remain sacred and, and viable. Uh, we, that's been in the prayers lately and we'll just do that again here tonight. So there's basically three things I wanted to talk about here tonight. And the big, the first thing is just an o, an overview recap of what happened. The second thing is a few of the good things that happened for us. And the third thing is what we're going to do going forward to make all those things better. So uh, we had nearly six hundred bills passed this year and that's, I believe, the most that's ever passed. And we had the most open bill files. And you've probably heard all of those statistics before. Um, the thing that's probably m- most important or different about that is not just the sheer number of bills, but the tendency to see more bills on specific issues. And so the reason why that is sometimes problematic is these bills don't necessarily play nice with one another. And so this is particularly a trend in the land use area where we'll, um, we used to see in a session, one or two major land use bills and then a few minor land use bills. And this session, we had well over a dozen that were passed. A few dozen that were considered. And some of them don't make a whole lot of sense when they're put together. Uh, one example of that is in, uh, there were two bills on religious conscience protection. They're both house bills, both of them passed. Both of them affect completely different sections of the code and neither one changes one bit the legal protections available to employees under those circumstances. And so you've got a couple of bills, they pass, there's some more code, but what does it really mean? Not necessarily a whole lot. In the land use arena, we see contradictions that sometimes are a little more significant. Um, for instance, uh, our engineers just love the stormwater bill that passed. Uh, they're, they're just very happy about that. And um, we're going to have probably a dozen meetings at some point to figure out exactly what that means for us. But um, we also see that with housing, not just with land use, but with housing. We see a lot of different bills addressing a single subject area. And so that makes it pretty tough to come up with cohesive policy. And so one of the challenges that we have is tracking all of these things separately and saying, okay, we've got seven bills. We know not all of them are going to pass. What permutation of them passes and what's the impact going to look like? So big picture, that's the trend that we're seeing in the legislature is more bills and more bills on specific subject areas. Uh, and that does frankly make it a little tougher to implement the changes that are required. Sometimes those changes are a little bit contradictory. So three good things that happened for us this session. Uh, we talked a lot about the building inspection bill. This was one of the land use bills and that bill was defeated in the sense that it was amended into a mutually agreeable and acceptable um, place. And so the credit for that goes primarily in my mind to two groups. First of all, being the League of Cities, which really worked this bill hard from start to finish and the hours they put in were untold. And also our building inspection community. Jerry here uh, is active in their group and was uh, and that group was very vocal about what that bill in its original form would mean for our residents, for people that are buying homes and you know, what that might mean for safety. And so that all ended up in a good spot and that was a good thing. Uh, the second good thing that happened is we did get an appropriation of one point eight million dollars for Fortieth West. Um, and that credit, um, first and foremost goes to our public works guys for having a coherent, competent plan and being able to identify priorities, especially very quickly. Um, and um, when I asked them on absolutely no notice whatsoever, what their project priorities were, they were able to tell me that instantly. And so that makes it a whole lot easier for a guy like me to explain what those priorities are when our public works guys have that straight and know what it is that they want to do. Uh, our consultant, Dave Stewart, has always been a great help to us at the Capitol and was especially helpful on that matter as well. And so that is a major chunk of the funding that's required to make that project happen. Um, Dan, I don't believe that's all the money that we need, but it is a, it is an admirable start. And so that is a good thing as well. Um, the third thing that happened concerned homeless mitigation funding. And so we've been dealing with the homelessness issue in West Valley for a long time now. We have the shelter at Thirty-Fifth and Redwood. We have the public safety impacts that happened with that. And the legislature did appropriate ongoing money to the homeless uh, shelter cities mitigation fund. Uh, two point five million dollars ongoing, so you don't have to go back and keep fighting for it. Uh, and the reason that happened once again was the League of Cities. Also Mayor Lang had something to do with that. Um, the mayor's very much stormed the Capitol and their presence was felt and that money would not have happened without the mayor's doing that. So Mayor Lang deserves credit for that. Mayor's uh, Mayor Stevenson from Midvale, Mayor Zeltansky from Sandy, all worked very, very hard. Um, and that's going to transition us nicely into every football coach's ever, ever's line, which is onto the next one, right? So how do we manage all of this stuff going forward? And what we learned, I think, from our representatives and our senators this year is that they want to be more engaged with West Valley City and not less. Our, um, you know, we obviously had to ad lib a little bit the last week of the session and getting everybody introduced to one another. And it was certainly a challenge on that front, but our representatives and senators were great and they welcomed that outreach and were very strong advocates for us. Um, despite maybe the communication not being where it could have been in the past. And so um, Mayor Lang was a help with that. Um, the rest of you council members uh, might get drafted for twenty twenty-five as well. Um, we, um, it's really helpful when we have representatives and senators that have an existing relationship, not just with staff members, but with you as elected officials as well. And here's the reality is you all have a credibility that I don't have. I have no idea what it's like to run a campaign in West Valley City. Nobody in West Valley City has ever voted for me for anything and they never will. The seven of you on the council cannot say that. You know, you, you all have, you all have the same constituents. And so, um, you know, in representative, Representative Roner's district, you've got our two at-large folks and I believe that would be Mr. Harmon's district as well, um, there primarily. Um, and so those relationships matter a lot. And what we're going to be doing over the off-season this year and into next legislative session is providing more opportunities for our legislators to come and be involved not only with staff, but with you as a council, so that you can share your experience of what's happening and develop that relationship. The reality with the legislature is two things, okay? The first thing is it's, don't panic. It's never as bad as it looks. All right, if we were one bad bill away from collapse, we would be a smoking crater in the earth today. Um, it's going to be fine. We're going to get through it. There's no bill that will utterly destroy the city. We're all still going to be here and we're all going to keep, keep our shoulder to the wheel, right? The other reality is that if our representatives are disconnected from what's happening here in West Valley on a day-to-day basis, if they don't know what the city does, if they don't know what you do in terms of talking to your constituents, their actions at the legislature will reflect that. And we had a couple of instances where our representatives cast votes that maybe weren't super helpful to the city. And the reason why is that they simply didn't understand what was happening here at the city. And um, and I'll say a hundred percent, that's on us. We had to do a better job. We've got to reach out to our elected officials. We've got to connect them with you as fellow elected officials and build that relationship. Um, and that doesn't mean we're going to be successful all the time. It doesn't mean that our representatives are always going to vote the way that we think is, is maybe the best. But when you build that relationship, it makes it a lot easier to say, all right, all right, this is a leadership bill. You're not voting with me this time. Next time? You know, because there's always another bill. There's always another session. And when you build those relationships, you end up in a better place. And so we're going to work really hard to do that, to get our representatives in touch more often with you and uh, to see that those relationships are built and strengthened. And so, um, we got six hundred plus bills. Any questions about them? I know you guys read them all. It was all in the packet and everything. Um, but um, any questions I can answer about that?
Seeing none. I will just thank Brandon for really helping that last two weeks of the legislature. It made a big impact and we got some things done that needed to be done. And I think moving forward, more communication will be very much needed. And I'm just glad we rejoined the league because they really did move the needle on a lot of these things that we needed help with. So.
They did. And, and I'll say, I'll speak to that, that question as well with the League of Cities. I think um, sometimes it's really hard uh, to do their job because you hear about high-profile bills that are not great for us that happen. And people will say, well, where was the League of Cities? Why didn't they stop this from happening? Well, here's the reality, right? The League of Cities is not in the same position as private developers. They're not in the same position as private industry groups that can simply go and raise money for campaigns and have an influence that way. We're not allowed to do that. Um, that is a great way to end up in federal prison. So uh, we're not going to be doing that. Um, in, by the nature of what they do, the league is often in a kind of defensive position of, of sort of trying to hold on to what you have or trying to makes, make a bad thing less bad or a good thing a little better. And so they do a lot of hard work that I think in the past maybe hasn't been recognized very well. And um, and they were a huge help to me and to the mayor and uh, really to our efforts down the stretch in this session. And so I really appreciate their work. Um, Cameron's the executive director. If you, have you all met Cameron and, and the league guys? You're going to see a lot more. Uh, we're going to dragoon them in here. Um, but uh, Mayor Pike and all those guys, it's a great group and they work really, really hard. And that's the biggest thing to keep in mind with the legislature is things will go badly. Um, there, next year, I guarantee you there will be ten bills that we panic about and three that maybe warrant panic and one that passes. Bad stuff's going to happen. The key is to continue to work, keep, keep getting those wins and, and just keep grinding and you'll be better off than if you didn't. All right, thank you.
All right, well now to our sustainability update with Mr. Springmeyer. They don't look like donut boxes, so.
They are not. Jonathan Springmeyer, Chief Sustainability Officer. Thought the only way you could follow Brandon is with gifts. So we're going to do that if you indulge me for a moment.
Please have names on them?
John, are those under fifty bucks? They work?
You were, exactly. I'll explain the reason behind these in just a second. Harmon's hold for him. Chris Simpson's, we hold for him.
Thank you.
And we have one for ready to go, uh, for, uh, Mr. Peely as well. Um, bottles were the, the hope was that the bottles could be an alternative to our, our water consumption during council meeting. We have this great Culligan water, uh, back here that, uh, if you choose to use those, uh, we think that would be pretty cool. Um, we're not going to pull the water bottles out immediately, but if these are used and if you so choose to use this as an alternative, then maybe we can start scaling back some of the single use water bottles, at least in council meeting. So there's that. Um, main reason I'm here today, uh, we had, uh, request, um, for an update on the glass recycling program. So I wanted to give you updated where that is. The good news is it is up and it is operational. We are picking up, um, at, at our, at our subscribed residence homes, uh, and have had no issues with that. The less so great news on it is we don't have a whole lot of subscribers yet. Uh, 42 is the number of subscribers that we have right now, which is well under, I should point out, well under what they said would be a minimum to provide service. They just went ahead and said, we're going to do it. We think our trucks being out in the neighborhood is as good a marketing as we can get. So they're doing it off the 42. We are working with momentum. Got Sam's office helping me out, uh, working with Menor Recycling to boost uh, their marketing efforts. Um, I'm of the belief that, that this is enough of our residents don't know that this is available to them yet and an option for them. So, um, in the next couple of months, we're going to be doing uh, a, a, a heavy marketing push to try to build that up. They already have 62 in their lead, lead status that we're hoping, that they're hoping to activate, but we're going to be working with them doing community canvassing. We're looking at doing additional flyers within our own utility buildings to our, buildings to our residents, uh, and then
Two questions.
Certainly, man.
So Clean and Beautiful is having a Spring Fest?
Yes.
April.
Yep.
Are we going to have a booth there so people could sign up?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. It's presence at community events, uh, including West Fest and those things. Yes. Those are all things that we're planning on doing with them. Any questions on the glass recycling before I shift to my one other quick update? This, this last update, yes.
You're ending that. So how much is it for a glass container?
Eight dollar, the, I believe there is a, I think it's a $25 registration fee and then it's eight dollars a month. And that obligation is you can end it. It, and there's no long-term contract. It's a 30-day renewable contract, but it's eight dollars a month and they pick up once a month.
Oh, once a month?
Yes. The, the glass recycling.
Neighborhood has a different date or is the whole city one?
I don't know how they're doing that right now with the 42. Um, we actually were talking about internally today, wondering where are those 42? Are they such that they're able to do them more? And it's likely not. So we're probably picking up on, on, on multiple days at this point, but I don't have that. I could find out for you if you'd like.
Do you know what color the can is?
Cans are gray.
Gray?
Yep. Yep.
You have one, Jake?
Yes. So we might be shooting ourselves in the foot with, because we invite neighbors to put theirs in there.
Yeah.
Fill it up every month.
Yeah. Yeah.
Some beverages there that I know my wife's not drinking.
And I, I do the, yeah, I do the same at my home. I have, I, I subscribe and I've just told my neighbors whether it's in my driveway or whether it's the first, my pickups, first Thursday of every month, when I put it out, go dump your glass in there. If there's room, knock yourself out.
I just didn't know if it'd be helpful if I got one just so that the neighbor saw it and asked questions. So, okay.
Yeah. Good. Um, the last update is more of a teaser than an update. It's, uh, um, in the next few weeks, uh, I will be, I, I'm working with, with legal on getting the contracts squared away, but we will be bringing to you. What I'm going to classify as, as a substantial investment in EV charging stations throughout the city. Um, these will be at all, all but one of the planned locations will be at city-owned and operated facilities, cultural center, golf courses. Family Fitness Center and Maverick Center will be the, will be the, the, the main. Um, we're going to do a, a, we're going to do a big one there. Details to come, but that is, but that is forthcoming. Any sustainability questions or I could turn around, switch hats and we could do ED too. So.
I'm, I'm, I'm wondering the status of our regular recycling then, how much of that is really being recycled and?
How much of the materials are actually being really recycled? I don't know that I'm, I can answer that for you, Councilman. I, I can look into it. I know that's an ongoing thing with, with ACE. Um, I can tell you, I part of the reason, plastic is the hardest thing to recycle. And the smaller they are, the more difficult they are, and it is the hardest thing to recycle. Paper's pretty easy. Aluminum's pretty easy. Glass is exceptionally easy. Um, and it's, as you remember, when we, when I first did the pitch, all that recycled glass is just going down the road to Payson and being reused, repurposed into, into fiberglass for insulation on our homes and, and buildings. So plastics, the hard one. Um, I don't have any hard numbers on what those, but I'm happy to look into that for you.
Thank you. John, I'm, I'm actually working on a presentation on the whole program.
Outstanding. Great.
Perfect.
Okay. Thank you.
So much. All right. Well, now turn the time to Mr. Thompson to discuss the carbon monoxide detectors. We have the memo. That's right. It's not coming up on my, oh, there we go. Had a little bit of a hiccup. So I know you explained the fire stations and such.
Jerry Thompson, Chief Building Official for West Valley City. I am your building official.
So do you mind going through what the paperwork says?
So we have, we'll check my number before I say this. Uh, currently we have 29 buildings in the city, soon to be 30 with the new, uh, shed coming in. Six of those are fire stations. Initially, um, my comments in the, in the memo were that we don't have any CO detectors in those buildings. I lied. I apologize. We actually have CO detectors in six of the buildings because they're all fire stations and that's where we have people there sleeping. Per the building code, any, anytime we have, uh, individuals sleeping in a building, uh, building code requires the carbon monoxide detectors be put, be installed there. Additionally, also in any kind of a, a garage situation, um, there are circumstances that take place. So like at the Sallyport over at the police station, there are sensors there that turn on fans to, um, when emissions reach a certain level and stuff, if they have a vehicle running inside the building, that, that those fumes are exhausted. Um, carbon monoxide is an odorless, tasteless, colorless gas that we really don't know where it is until we find it in, through their, uh, some sort of monitoring sensor or somebody's affected by it in some way or another. Um, and usually that's because the levels have reached a certain threshold that's determined by, um, health organizations as to what that should be. Um, I did learn something interesting. Last couple of weeks, I was actually talking to uh, representative from OSHA about some of the circumstances that prompted this. And come to find out what happens is the, um, it's usually when we do something different than the norm, um, is when we have these, these circumstances happen. And in at least one of the cases that we were hearing about on the news, uh, with a, a Smiths, a grocery store, um, turns out that they had some equipment that was electrically operated and it broke. And while they were waiting for the repairman, they went back and grabbed some of the old equipment that they were using before that was propane powered. And that is where the carbon monoxide poisoning came from, um, in those cases. So I can, in talking with Jake, I don't think we have any propane powered equipment that we use inside, like floor, floor buffers or anything. They're all electric. And we have some very good, um, air handling units that are creating a positive pressure in the building and moving the air around. And so any excess gases or anything are actually expelled through the outside, through there. Uh, there is a possibility though, should, should you want to go forward with, uh, carbon monoxide detectors? They range all the way from a simple $30 device that you just plug into an outlet or all the way up to thousand dollar devices that we integrate into the air handler systems. Um, so it's kind of, hopefully there's some information there. Any other questions?
So you said, um, the gel intake has it for the running cars when they're putting people. What about the fire stations with the trucks in the bays?
Same thing.
They're in there as well?
They're in there as well. Yeah. The, the police station was an example of that. But yeah, anytime that the, um, the equipment starts up or anything, there, there are sensors on the doors that open them to, uh, to expel those gases.
Okay. So there's not monitoring systems in there to alert if it doesn't work properly or are there?
Um, I think there are sensors. There are sensors in there that do as well, but, uh, the first, first line of defense with it is to have the doors or fans turn on that move the air. And if those don't work, then the alarms go off.
Okay. And how often do we check the alarms in the sleeping quarters and different places?
Uh, usually they're the same as you test at home when you change the battery.
Okay.
Uh, so it's every six months or a year, depending upon how often they, usually it's recommended by the fire department uh, to do it at daylight savings. So it should have been done last weekend.
Okay. And then like, uh, Councilman Christensen discovered, do we replace them after a certain age?
So they're typically, the manufacturers are saying that they're good for about 10 years. There are some devices about, uh, 15 or 10 years ago that actually came out that lasted about six months. Uh, they were immediately recalled, uh, from there, but typically we're seeing from the, uh, the general use is about 10 years. And you also notice that now a lot of them have their own battery on them. They don't even have to be plugged in for the ones that you have in your home. Uh, and they have a 10-year battery on them for that reason. And that's about what the manufacturer thinks will, before they, the sensors wear out.
Okay. So do we have a schedule of like this fire station needs theirs this year? And then this one was built two years later and we changed them all out in that?
I'm not sure of that, but I'm, I don't know right off, but I'm sure that there is that such a schedule for that as part of the regular maintenance of the buildings. Same as they are planning, like with water heaters or furnaces that that's just in a rec, a, a schedule for those.
Okay. I just don't want to be a headline.
As I told my scouts when I was a scout master, please don't put me on the news.
That's all I'm asking here. Okay. Did anybody else have any questions? All right. Thank you. All right. Now some past communication items. Um, just needed some updating. So the audit results, do you want to go through these or do you want me just to? So the audit results, um, are online with the state. And so we do not put them on the city website. Do we have a, on the city website though, directing them to it, a spot? No, no, no. Okay. Would anybody care if we did that? So that if somebody wanted to look at those results, they could do it easily. Okay. If we could add that to the website, then that would be great. And then the rental housing question, I can't remember who asked. It might've been Councilman Harmon. Do you want to put this one or?
This one was just, um, so I believe it was Councilman Harmon that had requested just the information that was sent out previously regarding rental housing scenarios and what those look like. So this was just a presentation that was already provided to council, just sent to the council as a reminder.
Okay. So he has a source that he wants to go back and look at it. Okay. Did anybody have questions on that one? And Mr. Harmon, did that's, this information satisfy your questions?
Yeah.
Doesn't sound very convincing.
No, it's fine. We'll, we'll keep, uh, seeing how we can work through it.
Okay.
Thanks.
And then Councilman Wedstone had the question about if we have a place the scouts can meet.
Yeah. So the, the response was that basically if, and it makes sense if there's an employee attending, then obviously that's, that, you know, the employee can open and close block of the building. So that's that layer of security oversight. But would there be a appetite from the council to come up with a way to allow scouts? I mean, with changes that have happened to scouting in the recent years, they're somewhat left without places to meet. And that's what this scout leader was coming to me with. Trying to find a place to, to meet on a weekly basis. And I just don't know if that's even possibility or?
So do you know what their schedule is? Could they come, um, and use the building like at 4:30? When there's people here, but they could just use building then? Because would that be feasible?
Yeah, I think we, we, we could do something like that. I, I think I would tell you to keep in mind, it's always hard to know where to draw the line and, and what entities we allow to, to come in and use, so use the facilities and which ones we don't.
And by practice now, we, we generally refer groups like that to the libraries just because they offer rooms like that, that are open to the public. And, and that's just kind of what we've, we've done historically by practice.
So do you have any more questions on that one?
No, I'll, I'll get back with her and see if they've explored that. See if there's any more desire to, to try to find a meeting place. I don't know that around this area, this is in my district, there's no libraries and there's fitness center and that's probably the biggest meeting area.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions on that one? Seeing none. We'll go to the council calendar. Does anybody have any questions on council calendar? Okay. Seeing none. Any potential future agenda items?
I already asked about the veterans memorial.
Yes. Yeah, we do have that scheduled.
And then maybe a potential agenda item, depending on what the council's overall desire is, but we have this veterans facility planned on 2700 that the VA is informed us about. Sounds like a large facility, I think 180. And it's which is great. When I spoke to Wayne about this last year, he gave a couple of other suggestions. Would the council be interested in exploring those? Or do we feel like this VA facility? is is meeting that need and it's?
I think you have the most experience. What the subject, do you think this will take care of the needs that? I mean, I only know how many buildings or how many rooms or whatever, but we don't know what support is going to be in there. Should we ask for more of a presentation? Or what else are you looking to support wise to put with it?
Yeah, I certainly think that it'll great asset for the veteran community in our city. All I was wondering is, you know, there were other possible solutions and whether or not we should discuss those or do we feel like with what's being proposed already.
I guess I'm not super familiar with what's being proposed. So the idea of a presentation or something a little more formal.
Yeah, we had it a few weeks ago, kind of some highlights on it, but it's over where the driving range is.
I got that same level of view. Yeah. Like you were saying, I don't know what wraparound services are being offered or what personnel will be staffed there versus what's at the VA by the U, you know, those kind of things.
So you're in favor of having a presentation as well?
Sure.
Yeah.
No, that wouldn't hurt. And then give us something to react to. And maybe there's something else that we could add or or other things that they could align with that other organizations in the city are already doing. I don't think that's a bad thing to look at.
Yeah, and then the other thing is once they get it built, maybe give it a year and see if there's any other need as well and not proactively do something ahead of what maybe they'll already have taken care of. But can you see if you can find out if they can do a presentation?
Yep, absolutely.
Because really, the only thing they're going to have down there for transportation is the bus services.
Yeah, I thought that area was retention in area that I'm not sure.
Well, we've built or we allowed townhomes to be built on the north end of that property. And there was no storm drain or anything like that, water retention in that application that I remember. So. Okay. All right, anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on to council reports. So Councilman Christensen and I went to Pilar Probill renaming of the gallery at the cultural center. That was a nice occasion. I mean, the food was wonderful. It was a packed house. I really thought there would maybe be 50 people there. There was well over 100, if not 200 people there. Very well attended, beautiful artwork. And the two pieces she's donating to the cultural center were amazing. So and she does sculpture, painting. She's a very talented lady, 97 years old. And her and her two daughters were there, one from Spain flew in and it was a really nice event. So I think that the cultural center did a great job putting that on and it'll be a good. You know, for those people that haven't been there, it's a good introduction to the cultural center. So.
Councilman Christensen and I also attended the Aspen Dental Ribbon Cutting. It's great that they have a good employee base. The doc, the dentist that's there resides in their city. Came here to to manage this facility. So it's really nice. It's big and they already had quite a few appointments already lined up.
Good.
Hey, not really a report, but in our consent agenda, we did have two upstanding citizens reappointed. And just a reminder to all of us that we have, it's well within us to identify folks in our communities who we think would be great additions to these boards and commissions and committees. Some online self-nomination forum, or we can nominate people as well. As these terms come up and there are opportunities for other folks to serve in the community, it's always nice to go for the nominations. We don't actually appoint them, but we can definitely fill the ranks of the nominations.
Yeah, that's a great reminder. And for these two to be reappointed, because I know that this board is takes a lot of personal time to review all of the paperwork. So I like it when I see reappointments. Because I think after one term, I'd be like running from that one. Hey, do we have a need for a closed?
Maybe not.
Okay, so we just have one more action item.
We should do it.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Stand adjourned. Thank you.